Citizens. Now, you have three minutes. Nobody will interrupt you. Dan Keater?
Mr. Coles, is it true that I could have ten minutes if I'm representing an organization? I'm representing-
You're the only one who's going to speak on this.
I'm the only one speaking on behalf of Citizens for Clean Kirwinville this evening.
Are you speaking on the ethanol at all?
Yes, that's what my presentation is on.
Okay, that's going to be the only thing, if you're going to speak for ten minutes, on the ethanol too. That's going to take care of everything.
I guess I can't speak for the citizens who might say they want their three minutes, but I'm asking for the ten-
Well, if they're not with your group, if they're with your group, there's only one of us who can speak. That's what she's saying, yeah.
There are really only Sam, myself, and Carol are the only members of our group. Other people have attended our meetings, but they're the only official members of our group.
Okay, I'll give you eight minutes.
Okay. Just please do it.
Eight.
Six.
Eight.
Speaking on behalf of Citizens for Clean Kirwinville, we wanted to start by thanking Planning Commission and Eric Kern for acting in the best interest of the borough at the meeting Monday night. And I wanted to thank Sam Mataro for submitting answers to my questions that I presented at the last meeting. I'm going to try and cut this down some. What I'm going to speak about is clarification of our committee and what our group and what we're doing. First, we're not against biofuels or ethanol jobs for Kirwinville. We are a proponent of all those things, but we are against the waste coal-fired cogeneration plant being placed within the close confines of our town, and more specifically beside the school. On December 19th, 2007, the President signed into law Bill HR6, known as ESA, the Energy, Independence, and Security Act of 2007. Among other things, this law, ESA, defines how ethanol must be made if it's going to be sold to oil companies. It also spells out what percentage of ethanol must be used when making gasoline. ESA mandates oil companies to mix their fuel with a certain percentage of ethanol. To receive credit towards a required percentage, the ethanol must be purchased from plants that are compliant with the regulations set forth in ESA. The law goes on to specify how ethanol must be made. Specifically, according to ESA, ethanol must be produced in a manner that the sum total of all greenhouse gas emissions from the process of making the ethanol, from growing the corn until it arrives at the oil company, must be 20 percent lower than that of producing gasoline. If you think about it, it makes sense, because ethanol's meant to be green. So if the process of making the ethanol burns more oil and makes more pollutants than that of making gas, then the law is basically there to say, why bother if it's not cleaner? Furthermore, the oil companies purchasing ethanol from plants not operating within said guidelines may not count the ethanol purchased from noncompliant factories toward their government-required minimums. Oil companies only want ethanol produced in ESA-compliant factories. Plants that are already in operation will be grandfathered and not held to ESA guidelines, but Sunnyside, we are sure, does not want one such facility. And the reasons, I have documented here, and I'm going to give you a copy rather than read all of it. We, let's see, I'm going to skip down to an official statement that we've been given from Mr. Green. He is the lead expert on biofuels and Director of Renewable Energy Policy for the Natural Resources Defense Council. And he has submitted a statement explaining why he believes that the Sunnyside project will not be able to meet the 20 percent compliance mandated in the ESA law. We also have statements from Ann Mezakoff of the Sierra Club. She and her legal team have analyzed for our organization the status of the Sunnyside project and provide us with legal precedents and documentation defining what under construction means in the guidelines in ESA. There are three criterion that need to be met for something to be considered grandfathered into the ESA laws and not have to meet their requirements. One would be, they would have to have all their permits, including local building permits, before the date the bill was signed into law, which was December 19th, 2007. They would also have to have major construction, including infrastructure begun, and/or secured major financing, none of which Sunnyside had as of the date of signing of that bill. You'll also find in the packet that I give you where she actually quotes the actual law, but I won't bother reading that to you tonight. And she quotes cases where it's already been fought and litigated in court to set precedence for what we're saying tonight. I'll wrap this up with saying in conclusion that Citizens for Clean Kirwinville, in conjunction with the NRDC and the Sierra Club, urge you to reconsider any movement forward with the Sunnyside project, as their ethanol will not be ESA-compliant, dooming the project economic failure. It is our intention to continue to pursue this in conjunction with NRDC and the Sierra Club if we continue to move forward with a project that is not ESA-compliant and therefore not EPA-compliant. We understand that you don't have to allow more public meetings, you don't have to listen or present a clean air ordinance on behalf of the borough, but I present to you tonight that you cannot ignore the federal ESA guidelines that I referenced tonight. I specifically ask on behalf of Citizens for Clean Kirwinville that you do not give local and land use and building permits to Sunnyside until such time that Sunnyside proves their compliance with ESA. We and our experts are happy to answer your questions, and our contact information is supplied in my handout. So I'll give you my handout, which I didn't read word for word because of time. And we also have the information for contacting Nathaniel Green, Senior Policy Analyst, Ann Meznikoff with the Sierra Club, and myself. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'll tell you what, you give us that, or all we need, I make sure the Secretary gets a coffee, she will give it to our solicitor.
Sure. We actually have a copy, too, of the letter directed to me from Mr. Green.
Mr. Keater?
Yes, I have a copy for everyone.
It's four pages long.
There's a copy here for each of you, if you'd like, of Mr. Green's information as well as what I spoke on tonight.
Oh, you have a copy of that, don't you?
Yes, copy of the letter for everyone. Thank you for your time.
We'll back step down to the gate of the scene and let them work, then. Yeah, I don't, I-
You ought to call before, are we through the citizens' time?
Is that, are we through the citizens' time? He's still, he's going to, it's turning to ethanol. Where's that call? Is there any more sentences on this ethanol? Oh, okay. We'll take you two first. Carol, oh, you, okay, you've been representing. Elizabeth Wright?
Rick, I'm a staffer, and I'm still Martha's sister. When I first addressed you, I spoke about pollution and the burning of the coal with this ethanol plant, and the roads and the jobs and where the people working at this plant would spend their money. Well, tonight, I just want to ask you, please, to have Sunnyside return to Kirwinville for other public meetings, so, because the world has changed since their first meetings back in 2006. Things that were not known then are known now, and they need to be addressed, and everybody's concerned ethanol side and citizens' concerns be addressed. These safety concerns were just mentioned tonight by this lady, and so, and there seemed to be quite a few of them that she was talking about. I don't know all the letters that she was meaning. I mean, I grew up in Washington DC with the AFL-CIO and the COVA and IBW and all these letters, but hers, I don't know. Anyhow, I'm not against the plant. Martha knows we need industry in this town. We have for a long time. We lost the cheese plant, we lost Kent Sports Square, we lost Julie's good pizza place over on South Side, and we used to have fun hanging out there.
Thank you.
And I'm just against burning the coal. If we could generate the power with electricity, it would be so much cleaner. The industry would still be here. Please get them back so we can address these concerns, so we can maybe get change from waste coal burning to electricity. Thank you.
The people can have a public meeting if they want to and ask them to come in. Council is no longer going to address this.
Well, if you can't do that, I mean, ask them, the citizens would have to-
We're not going to do that. We've got everything from DEV, where they have to comply right now, they're going to, our engineer has some proposals that they have to do to correct, and when he gets those corrected, and Sunnyside gets that corrected in the near future, they will have a meeting with the Planning Commission prior to the council meeting.
And just as the rest heard things about the HR6 that she was talking about, that being compliant with last year's-
They have to be in compliance with what our engineer calls for. That's why we have an engineer. Because none of us, or you, or anybody's technically educated in what has to be done. So our engineer will address whatever he has to, and then he will make the recommendation for them what they have to do. This will be in the very near future.
You know, burning the coal is greenhouse gases, I mean, it's a fossil fuel.
Well, my understanding is, our engineer will address all this stuff. We have this letter from Mr. Scheeter that it will go down to Mr. Seaman, he can look at that, give us his answer on that. That's the best we can do.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Coles.
Thank you.
One engineer returned it to the river, and also with other issues we're addressing, but the CFS in that river, in the low water condition, do you know anything about the Barnes and Tucker that were, they were going to release two extra million gallons of water a day? Do you have any knowledge of that? Well, at that meeting, they said that they were going to be able to release that extra two million gallons of water a day. About 20 years ago, whenever the river was running red, and they had to throw a line in, they diverted that water. But they were supposed to be able to release that water now, which would maybe have offset some of the temperature fluctuations that's going to take place in that river. Because the aquatic life, I know we're not entomology, nobody's, nobody's an expert in entomology, but I know, from, I fish a lot, that if you get an influx of high temperatures in that river-
Fish form?
Well, no, that'll kill everything. And also, you know, they had the, I talked to the DEV about, I think it was DEV, an engineer, about cold water releases from the dam. They can't do it. They can't do it, offset. If you get, if you get that river down to where it's truly level, they've got to be really careful about your releases, because it'll kill. And that would be, that would hurt you, I think that'd hurt the area, I don't know. A lot of effort's been put in that river.
You say Barnes and Tucker are going to be releasing-
Well, they were supposed to.
They haven't.
Because what that would have done is, when, during the low water flood, that would increase the oxygen content in the river. Anytime you have a CFS, CFS flood would increase, that's going to increase the oxygen content, which preserves life. But I just wondered if you had any knowledge of it.
No.
Were you aware of it?
No.
You weren't even aware of it?
That's why I asked you if this was risky, because I remember when Barnes and Tucker, they had to impound that water-
Yeah, they impounded the water.
And that's been a while ago, years ago.
Right, but what they did, they treated it.
Yeah.
Now, at that meeting, they had the civic center. I was asked, and that was brought up, and he said that, well, with this extra flow of water we're going to be getting, that would offset any temperature increases in the river. So, you know, it's just another concern.
That's something to check.
Because, you know, you know the efforts have been put into that river, and the fishing and everything, and the recreational benefits and everything now. And you don't want to kill that river. We spent how many years to get it to where it is?
Many.
Many, many years to get that river to where it is. So that's my concern.
Yeah, we'll mention that to our engineer tomorrow.
You're going to have a Planning Commission meeting, aren't you? And would he address that at that meeting?
Well, I'd like him to check into that beforehand.
Okay.
Because at that meeting, Sunnyside will have their act together, everything that they had to do. And there's not much we can do then.
Well, I understand that, but I'd like you to be at that meeting because I want to-
You can come to that meeting, sure.
That is my concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Wills?
Thank you. I would like to thank Mark Corolla, Joey Girardi, Wayne Regglesworth, Fred Sopic, and Dave McNaul for their patience and open mind in listening to both sides in the ethanol plant discussion. I am certain you will make the right decision on the plant, and it will be in the best interest of the future of that town. Our town needs to put forth a positive attitude in companies seeking to locate it. If Kirwinville sends a negative message about the plant, all companies seeking to locate in our community in the future will treat Kirwinville as if we had the plant. Citizens for a Clean Kirwinville organization consists of three people, Sam Mataro, Pam Scheeter, Carol McTell, who are all opposed to the ethanol plant. I would like to know if they are getting professional advice and who their professional experts are and what the reasons are. Pam Scheeter stated at the Citizens for a Clean Kirwinville meeting, "Not in my backyard." I thank council for allowing me to express my opinion in favor of the plant, which will be located in my backyard, I live on Park Avenue Extension, and have no fear of the plant. Also, I attempted to go to the meeting that was advertised in the paper, which said, "Citizens of Kirwinville and immediate surrounding municipalities wish to engage in thoughtful action for the purpose of to inform the public on all sides of the Sunnyside issue as well as opposed to clean air ordinance." When I attempted to go to that meeting, I met Sam Mataro outside the meeting room, and he told me in uncertain terms that I was not allowed to go to that meeting because I was in favor of the plant. And we argued for five minutes. He left, and when he came back, and he said I was allowed to go to the meeting, but I was not allowed to speak. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Right face, that what you did?
Not exactly, Mr. Wills, but that's fine. You can make your, that's your take on it.
I'm not on the ethanol, are you all done with ethanol, Eric?
I think we had Gary.
Gary?
I'll make it quick. How you guys doing? I'm in the business of communications, and I'm lousy speaking in front of people, so excuse me here. As I understand, the board is elected by people in the community to represent them, to speak for them. So please don't misunderstand me as saying that you're not doing your job, which I admire you guys all for having the nerve and the gumption to do what you're doing. It's not easy, especially with the voting turnout, as low as it usually is. You have to speak for a lot of people, and it's a lot of pressure upon your shoulders. And I think it takes a lot of people to voice opinions and ideas for us to come to conclusions and stuff. And otherwise, we're limited to what we can come up with ourselves. With that in mind, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. With the rising healthcare costs and all the healthcare concerns, it makes sense to study lunging air quality to various health risks for all ages. I strongly urge you all to look at the air quality of our area, which is not very good or promising. There's a website sponsored by the American Health, or American Lung Association called stateoftheair.org, it's part of the American Lung Association, and it rates our county as a C, with N being the best quality. Included in that is ozone and different particles in the air, which are linked to heart disease, cardiovascular disease, asthma, emphysema, and so forth. Again, I'm not speaking out against the ethanol plant at all, I'm just trying to throw it through the thought. We have to ask those, can other coal-burning plant, on top of what we have in Shawville, which everybody knows is, you know, not very clean, can other coal-burning plant be done so without adding to an already poor air quality? I believe it can, if it's done right, but, you know, this is something I think needs a lot of scrutiny and to be watched closely. That's why I urge you to call for some real-time air quality monitor devices that people in the community could at least, goes through, and they could at least get on their computers and check. It would help with some reassurance. And it would also help people feel a little easier about having something like this done. If this company's not offended by that idea, then that would just be some more proof that their intentions are good. But keep in mind, since Bush administration's taken office, EP and DEP standards have been lowered, which has put citizens at risk. We cannot trust our government standards alone. It's been proven over and over again. We have to set some standards for ourselves and possibly even come up with our own qualities for the air. Much research also, excuse me, much research for the ethanol has also been shown to affect the food choices. All companies are receiving incentives to use ethanol, and they're already reporting record-breaking profits. And behind the push for ethanol companies-
I'll let you finish that sentence, and then your time's up.
Okay, I have, I'll just make it quick. A doctor who knows a lot more than I do published an article, "Why Ethanol Backfires." I just passed it out, I didn't have coffees. But basically, it doesn't seem like a very viable thing, and I'm just concerned what happens if they pull out later on? Does that leave us with a mess? Do we get something cleaned up? The process, could be good, could be bad. Just asking for some, I don't know, maybe you guys look around and some stuff.
Thank you for your call.
All right, bye.
Okay, Mark, I'm going to switch hats. I just have a few comments on the ethanol plant as well, if I may. Since you're still on, I can, we need-
Yeah, three minutes.
All right, that's fine. I just want to, listening, I wrote a lot in the paper, and I've been listening to everybody that's been talking here tonight, and clean air is a big concern. I grew up here on Beach Street with the tannery for 25 years.
So did I.
And I have asthma, but I don't know if that tannery caused my asthma or not.
Yeah, no.
Both of my parents have died of cancer. I do not know if that tannery caused my parents to have cancer and die. So clean air is a big concern, yes. The school burns closed. Another big concern in this area is going to be when they start going to gas wells. I saw on 60 Minutes or one of the Dateline shows or something like that, where there's a small town in Boulder, Wyoming, that had a boom of gas wells. Their ozone is higher now than Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, because of the gas wells. Not because of the gas, but because of all the diesel fumes that are being emitted during those wells. So is one ethanol plant going to put our ozone higher than Pittsburgh, or Philly, or something like that? I guess it's yet to be seen, and we just trust DEP with that. Another concern I have is, you know, this area's lost a lot of industries, as this lady had said. And I have two teenage children that would really like to stay in this area, and I'd love it for them to stay in this area. That's why I serve on the CDC, to help bring industry into this area and see if we can create jobs in this area instead of just having a bedroom community and a service industry around here. We need some good, high-paying jobs, and if only bring 70 jobs, and we have a lot of spinoffs from it, I think that would be tremendous for this area. So I just want to go on record as saying, yes, the clean air is a concern, the river's a concern, but I'm all in favor for bringing some jobs in here and trusting DEP and the regulatory agencies on them doing their job and providing a clean, efficient, well-managed facility here in this town. Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Bell.
Okay, I guess that's the end of the citizens. I think, Mr. Shaw, if you had something else?
Yeah, I had a, well, actually, it ties into the ethanol issue. The dioxin thing, I have a handout, and this is going to be in the progress, and there's no need for me to even, actually, I'll leave it with them. Anyone wants a coffee, they can have it. My problem is, and this is going to be addressed to you, Mr. Scheeter, since you are the President for Citizens for Clean Kirwinville. I have a copy of a conversation from your website. You made a statement in regard to prior councils bankrupting this community. Now, would you like me to read it verbatim? Because I think you ought to defend yourself in this. Funny you should say that, Fred. Anything anyone else suggests has an offside motive of profit or money. Funny you should say that, Fred. The motive for this plant to come isn't about 55 jobs, is it? It is about the council that has bankrupted this community getting a quick bailout. I want to know where your proof is that we went bankrupt. I want to see your degree in accounting. I want to see any information that you obtained that says, "We are not bankrupt." You made an off-the-cuff statement, and I resent it. And I think Mr. Regglesworth, Mr. McNaul, Mrs. Girardi, and there are two other people that were on this council at the time, would resent it also. Me, myself, I shouldn't file a civil suit, but I'm not going to. I'm a little bigger than that. But when you make a blatant statement of that nature, you better back it up, lady. We are not bankrupt. We have busted our behinds to keep this borough solvent. We've lost 500 people in the last 10 years. We've lost a pile of money in a tax base. Is ethanol important? Your doggone right it is. Are we concerned with health of this community? Your doggone right we are. Have we weighed the pros and cons? Absolutely. I'm getting sick of hearing it. And every time you take our meetings, and I hope you put it on tomorrow. You have your little snippets, Sam. Oh, notice how Fred Sopic talked over so-and-so. Notice how, oh, ooh, the TV reporter walked out of the room when a really important citizen came up. That's bullshit, and you know it. It's a crock, Sam.
You say so.
Yeah, I do say so. I want to see your-
Fred, you're out of order. You are way out of order. Way out of order. You're out of hand.
Thank you for your comments.
You're out of hand, Fred.
Mr. Coles, all I have to say, since he asked me to respond, is that this situation is about, about the health of Kirwinville and not about personal issues. I don't even remember addressing Fred on my website. I've not seen his name on my website, so, I'm not sure what it has to do with anything, so.
The only thing, I don't, I don't think we should point fingers at past councils, because we all make mistakes. I made mistakes going as on council. I think this present council is trying to correct any financial difficulties that we have. And we're not headed toward bankruptcy, we're in a financial crisis, and we're trying to do the best we can to get out of it. And I don't think anybody should point fingers at past councils, because I think at this stage of the game, we need to move forward. Everybody needs to get along. Which you have to remember, if council members get very little money, they're mostly volunteers. I think everybody's fairly intelligent. They volunteer their time, and they have to work hard trying to get, you know, do what we can. We're trying to do the best we can.
Mr. Coles, has you said something?
In all fairness, in all fairness, I'd like to add to this, Mark, this isn't a private system. We're elected officials, and if somebody drops the ball, if a previous council drops the ball, and during their watch, we end up in a financial crisis, dare I say that in the freest country in America, we have the right, as the electorate, to hold our elected officials accountable. And if they aren't doing the job, if the best that they can do is not good enough, it needs to be brought out. Maybe we ought to hold public meetings as to how we ended up $200-some thousand in debt by the end of this year. That would be eye-opening. You sit there and smile like that, Fred? Would you like to do that? Let's pick a little clue, what do you know? All I'm saying is, people have a right to express that opinion.
We all have a right to say something, but if you're not satisfied with elected officials, then you need to vote them out at the next election. That's your answer. There's no use coming here pointing fingers and whatever.
But aren't the elected officials supposed to represent the community?
That is true.
And not only some small thing that someone's angry about and get all yelling? I don't think that's the right thing to do.
That's true, I mean, I don't want anybody getting out of order here, because-
That's already happened.
That's not going to be one. I don't care whether it's a citizen or a councilman. I'm not going to put up with bickering. If people aren't satisfied with the way previous council was, they're all going to be coming up for election again. You vote them out. If you don't like me, you vote me out. That's the way I look at it. Okay? Let's move on.
Mark, he said that that's all the citizens. I think there's some more that's going to be discussed.
I don't have anybody on the paper, Mark.
Me? But mine, no, I just wasn't about ethanol. I wanted you to be-
Oh, I missed you, Mark.
I just want you to be cleaned up on ethanol before I speak. Mine taught me something altogether different.
Those fell back, wait, those fell back here on?
Is there another ethanol?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mine, I'll be very brief. Half a minute, maybe. My concern, I know that everyone's concerned about some different things, and I, basically, I- basically, I'm concerned about economics. Uh, I've lived in this area for about thirty-seven years. I was originally from Columbia. Came here, worked for FCI for twenty-nine years. My job went overseas, so I was excited to see something maybe coming in. But little by little, I've become more and more concerned about, is it, is this plant really a good move economically for us? I want it to be, but I'm not sure. So it's a tough call. I mean, it really is. I mean, I'm not, I'm glad I'm not sitting there to, to be one to have to decide because what do you do, you know? It is a tough call. That's basically what I want to say. Just, uh, it's, I just, I'd like to see it be good, but I'm seeing so many figures in the news and stuff that ethanol is on a, you know, downside and people are speaking out against doing it. So, I don't know. But economically, I'm concerned.
One of the, one of the big things you have, you have a place full of chromium down here. If this stuff plant doesn't come in and enable cleaning up, it's gonna set there, and it's gonna cause a disaster. Uh, if hindsight is bad because what should've been done, it should've been checked, see housing leather reformed before they slapped and cleaned everything up. If this plant comes in and wanna leave, they won't have to clean everything up. That's what has to be done. But right now, they don't clean up, who's gonna clean up?
Why haven't we, as a community, stressed that cleanup?
What's that?
Why haven't we, as a community, stressed that cleanup?
Checked it.
Stress that the plant did its cleanup?
I have no idea.
Is that, well, that would sound like a, a really good idea to me.
Mark, isn't there a super fund related to that?
It doesn't, it doesn't qualify as a super fund, no.
It's not a, it's not a super fund obligation.
Well, what contaminants are there?
Everything that the house leather left. Anything that used contamin-
So they're all on the energy union?
No, no, they're done.
Hope that's neither not responsible.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the place we're playing in. Waiting to have a disaster. Basically. Well, they do in the river, they're gonna-
Well, we need to have our engineer address this stuff. We could sit here all night.
It's a bigger brag than what you're saying, whoever's here.
Our engineer will be addressing these concerns. He had, he had a bunch of concerns. You worked, uh, planning commission meeting. He's addressing most of the concern with Sunnyside, and they will revise their plan.
Mr. Corolla, is he an environmental engineer?
I have no idea. I would imagine he was qualified, he was about everything.
Oh, no, I think it's a little more specific than that, though.
These things are on the back of all that stuff.
You know, we're not like a kook fringe that is just crazed over getting this thing closed. We have some real issues. And, and they're all health-related, and they relate to our people and our children and our elderly. I mean, I think we have a real issue that we, if we get the answers we need and we're convinced that it will be this and it will be that, that we feel is workable, then we're all for it. From everything that we've seen and everything that we've heard and everything that's been published, they're total pollutants. Their, their pollution, their pollution, uh, permit is the, they have a permit for the highest pollution possible.
Yeah, the only thing we can go-
An EPA means nothing.
The only thing we can go is what our engineer recommends, what DEP says, and if they meet the criteria, we can't stop them. They meet the criteria, the government calls for it, we cannot stop them.
Well, we do have abilities to be able to put local controls into place that would at least hold them accountable beyond what the EPA and the Fed are doing, and that's provided for under state and federal law. There, the point being, that Carol's getting at, is that there are options that our local leadership refuses to explore. And they're very real options, and this side of it has not been heard and is continuing to not be heard.
Well, the only thing I can say, if people wanna have a public meeting with them and they're willing to get together, we just cannot, council cannot keep going with this.
Can we call for that public meeting?
Not very long, about three years.
If you wanna have public meetings, we can't, council doesn't back it. We have nothing in it.
Why not? Oh, you do, absolutely, you do.
We're not gonna control a public meeting. They've had the public meetings.
There we go.
Actually, that wasn't a public meeting. That was more like a question and answer.
Yeah, maybe Sam was there.
How was it? How was it? I mean, I mean, you didn't have one individual standing up there answering questions in the community. You had a bunch of tables here and tables there. You were going around asking questions of this individual and that individual, and it was just like a gathering.
There are three hundred and sixty plants in operation in the United States right now.
Doesn't mean anything.
And there are very few communities who are fighting to keep the plant out because we need the jobs. No matter how you cut it, the plant is gonna be safe. It's a state-of-the-art, high-tech facility that isn't gonna get any better, and the power plant is going to be less pollution than Shawville because Shawville is an old plant and it is titled to different standards than the new plants are. The new plants aren't regulated.
Okay, let's, let's talk to, we'll get ahold of DEP. That's the best we can do, and get their opinions on these concerns. I'll have the secretary talk to somebody tomorrow. I'll appoint, uh, Mr. McNaul and Mr. Soppick. They can talk to representative DEP and see what they have to say.
Do we have access to an environmental engineer?
Yeah, I'd better not do that because I might find out something that Sam doesn't like. We'll let, we'll let Sam talk.
No, it's because you're biased. I would suggest maybe protect maybe-
I'm heterosexual, Sam.
I'd pursue you for calling me gay, then. I would suggest somebody like Mr. Rigglesworth or Julia. Or something that would show more impartiality. I wouldn't suggest myself because I clearly have a, have taken that as well.
Well, Mr. McNaul would, uh, well, Mr. Ullrich, you probably don't, you have time to do that.
We can provide you with written concerns. That's not an issue. All you really gotta do is interface with the DEP and-
All I have to say is, Sam, you're determined to defeat the plant, doesn't matter what anybody else says.
Well, that's your opinion, you, that's not true.
You have the opinion my granddad used to say. I've made up my mind, don't confuse me with the facts.
Mr. Wills, thanks for speaking for me, okay? Have a nice night.
You give us a list of concerns, Mr. McNaul and I will meet with DEP. Okay? We'll give them concerns. If they say everything, if they're satisfied with everything, we're not gonna go a step further. What do you think, Mr. McNaul? Give us a list of your concerns, get them over here tomorrow. Uh, we'll have the secretary get a representative from DEP in, and we'll meet with them as soon as we can.
I don't think DEP's the be-all and end-all.
What's that?
I don't think DEP's the be-all and end-all. They're not glad, they don't have all the answers either. They approve plants that have, that have put more pollution into, into there than-
I, I think, I think in all fairness, what we've been saying is that the experts that know the negative sides of this industry have not been addressed and have not been discussed. I would like to see you folks sit down with somebody that knows the opposite side of this industry and can, you know, enlighten us as to the, uh, the obvious dangers that are there.
Perhaps Nathaniel Green or Dan Bezikoff from the Sierra Club?
Maybe, no, in New York, they're not, sure. That's the point of the public meetings that we've been trying to push for, to show fair and balanced both sides. And we're not seeing that.
Well, if you wanna bring somebody in to meet with a couple of us, you better do it quickly. Because this is going to go to the planning commission. If these things are addressed, our concerns that we have, it's going to go through. And if they meet the criteria, we cannot stop it because we can be sued. Let me give you an instance. People were against low-income housing that come in here. They met all the criteria. If we wouldn't let it win, we'd have been sued for four or five million dollars. We have no choice. People wanted to keep trailers out of here and the zoning. We cannot do it because everybody has the right to live someplace. So if you have any concerns, you need to get them down, and we will try to get to somebody and address them. But if they meet all of DEP guidelines, there's nothing that we can do. That's all I can tell you. We're trying to do the best we can with what we have to work with.
This latest law.
What's that?
This latest law that she quoted, and it's right in the article.
Well, we'll fax that stuff down to, you, you left that stuff here, she'll fax it down to Seaman and Gates. They will look and see if those laws are substantial. Okay? They'll look into it.
I, I think you would be open for more litigation if you approve an ESA non-compliant facility, um, without knowing if, if Sunnyside can be compliant with, with federal law. I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just making a guess.
Not to interrupt here, but would they invest three hundred and ten million dollars in this project knowing that they're not compliant? Surely they have attorneys that have checked that law and have looked at-
Things have, things have changed as it's happened this, those six years ago, Mr. McNaul. Why would they tell the school board there'd be hardly any truck traffic two years ago? And we heard at the planning commission that there'd be fifty-plus trucks a day now, all of a sudden.
Well, the whole thing is, there's three hundred trucks a day on this road right now. We have that stuff, we'll let our attorney check and see if they're following laws.
Fred, that is uncalled for. You're out of order. You're gonna call me an idiot? We're not in child's play. This is not high school, Mr. Soppick.
You guys are getting both out of hand now, let's go.
He called me an idiot and I'm getting out of hand?
I said you're both getting out of hand.
You're a child, Fred. I'm sick of it.
Now, if you both don't stop it, I'm gonna have to ask yous to leave. We're not gonna have any more of this. I don't condone these kind of meetings. I don't want this to go on. Like I said- We have any unfinished business?
Yeah, actually, last week, or last month, I wrote a council letter regarding the ongoing concerns and why we thought that there should be another round of public meetings to address the ethanol issue and catch the town up to speed and offer a balanced side. I think you all made pretty clear, or Mr. Corolla did, that the Borough Council is not going to move on any such item. And while I respectfully, I, I, I understand where you're coming from in that some sort of pause or tactic that could, uh, that could, uh, in other words, we can't, you have a good point, that we can't utilize some conditional whatever not related to the planning commission or zoning issues to pause that process. I understand that you brought up a good point, that we could end up getting sued in that process for doing so. However, that doesn't preclude the council from sponsoring a, a, a town hall meeting addressing these issues. And I think that frankly, we should've done that years ago. We, the people, we represent the people, the townspeople, have never held a meeting. And, and I'd still, I'd like, you know, I wanna be on the record as, as being the guy that's been pounding this since January, that we needed to have fair meetings and we haven't had balanced meetings. And, and, you know, I told you folks that I'd throw this out as a motion on, on the twelfth, and I'd like to go ahead and throw it out, that we do sponsor another round of public meetings that would offer fair and balanced-
Go ahead, make your point.
Well, I have it, and I have it in writing. I'd like to go ahead and look into holding some, uh, public meetings that are gonna offer pros, cons, and of course, the DEP folks that are supposedly neutral on all of our issues and explore. I have something written down here, but I can't find it now. I need to find it. I can't, hold on a second, I can't find my short notes. Ah, okay. A series of well-advertised public meetings should be scheduled by Kerrinsville Borough Council in the name of the people of the borough of Kerrinsville. It would effectively educate the public on all sides of this issue and offer public comment and questions of an informed, educated panel of supporters and opponents of the project. That hasn't been done in any way, shape, or form, and I'd like to see our, our council do that. The meetings ought to be videotaped and a public record be made after the fact, as currently there have no detailed public records of the previous meetings held, that I've been able to find anyway. And there is much new information to be shared with the public on this important issue since Sunnyside first applied for their permits almost two full years ago, October of this year. Such a meeting would provide the community with fair and accurate representation of the project and would only serve to advance the notion of open and transparent government and the idea that we, as elected officials, are truly interested and focused on making decisions that best serve the public's interests and protect the public welfare and health. And I'd like to ask the Borough Council to endorse the idea of such a meeting and agree to make an official government meeting in the name of the people of Kerrinsville with , uh, terms, format, date, and particulars being decided within ten days.
Do you wanna make that move?
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion as such. Subtle.
Mr. Carroll's made the motion. Uh, you've heard what the motion is. Do we have a second? Going once. Do we have a second? Going twice. Do we have a second? Going three times. It's dead for lack of a second.
Gotcha. Next one that I brought up in the issue, and it was, uh, I hope everybody took the time to read the letter last week and entered it into the public record. We believe that, and, and many folks do believe this is a good idea, that Kerrinsville Borough Air Pollution Monitoring and Disclosure Ordinance should be entered into public record and fully considered by Kerrinsville Borough Council. Such an ordinance would hold any new businesses setting up operations within Kerrinsville Borough to a higher standard of pollution control than that which they're currently being held and would offer real-time pollution monitoring via the internet directly to the people of Kerrinsville, therefore providing specific local accountability. Local ordinances of this kind are provided for under state and federal law. In short, we can do this. Such an action by Kerrinsville Borough would only serve to advance the public's best interest, would not hamper the economic and industrial development projects that are proposed by reputable and ethical, ethical companies, and would only serve to protect the public welfare and health by providing information on what is being emitted from any polluter in twenty-four-seven, real-time fashion. As Mr. McClure said, certainly any ethical company wouldn't have any problem with providing the information to the public in a real-time manner if they were indeed living up to their obligations under law. I would like to ask Borough Council to endorse this consideration of such an ordinance and move it into the public record. The council shall begin deliberations on such an ordinance, ultimately deciding upon some, some level of term within sixty days of this resolution being passed tonight. All local permitting, uh, that'll do, we'll stop. So there we go. There's a motion. I'd like to ask Borough Council to endorse consideration. This is non-binding. I'm just asking Borough Council to endorse the consideration of looking into such an ordinance that would provide for local air pollution controls and ask any polluter coming into our area to provide twenty-four-seven, real-time monitoring, when possible, to a public website that the people of Kerrinsville have access to. And I'd like to make a motion on that.
Okay, Mr. Carroll has made a motion on the subject that he just read. Uh, do we have a second on that? Going once. Do we have a second? Twice. Do we have a second? Three times? Motion's dead, come with those seconds. Anything else?
No, that was those were the two points of the last four comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Do we have any new business to come up?
Actually, this ease, or this, uh, thing that Pam brought up, I think there's some real validity there, and I'd like to clarify what the action is gonna be.
Well, that's not under new business.
Isn't that new business? Well, we had, you had, you had said that you were gonna follow up with, I'm trying to remember what it was, that you were gonna follow up with that issue. For the, for the, uh, the National Clean Air Standards that was brought up earlier in public comment. The Energy Independence Security Act? What are we gonna, what-
That would've been our whole business.
Well, it was just brought up tonight. And you had said that you were gonna follow up with our engineer on that?